They've let them in now.
John, tell us when everyone's in, please.
To what? Okay.
Everyone has, everyone from the waiting room has been admitted.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Carol Sights, I'm the Vice President of the Trustees, and I would like to call the meeting to order at 8:02 PM. And the first thing I would like to make everyone aware of is that the meeting is being recorded. Brenda, I believe, is with, with us. Could you please call the roll?
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Rabbit? Trustee Kelly? Trustee Sights?
Here.
Trustee Hines?
Here.
Trustee Shuck?
Yeah.
Trustee Callahan?
Here.
Trustee McNamie?
Here.
And Trustee Tifo? Okay, we've got four, six, present, three absent.
Okay, thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes. We have three, I believe, I hope this is correct, three, three meetings for which we have minutes, December 15th, December 29th, and January 19th. Why your motion to waive the reading of the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Excuse me.
Yeah.
You're a roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Rabbit? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, let me look. Trustee Sights?
Yeah.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Shuck?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee McNamie?
Yes.
Okay. Our motion carries six, zero.
Okay, I need a second motion. I should have done it twice, the same thing. Second motion to accept the minutes as written, to approve them. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I saw.
Motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Brenda?
Madam Chairman, could you identify those three sets of minutes in the, in the motion?
Yes, in the motion, the minutes are December 15th, December 29th, and January 19th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Brenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just looking to see. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I have the right minutes.
Okay.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Sights?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Shuck?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee McNamie?
Yes.
Okay, six, zero, motion carries to accept minutes as written.
Okay, thank you very much. We will be running this meeting strictly under the Roberts Rules of Order, and Mr. Callahan will, Trustee Callahan will make sure that we follow those rules. If you wish to ask a question, you may, you must address the chair, Madam Chairman, et cetera. And anyone who wishes to speak may speak or question for one or two minutes. I will not be discussing, I will not be answering questions. You may merely speak, and we will listen. So with that, I believe the next item on the agenda is the Director's Report. We do not have bills to approve because we, it's not clear who's signing bills right now, okay? So we will move on to the Director's Report, which is going to address the strategic plan. Okay. Bonnie?
Thank you, Carol. I have a few things I'd like to say, and I appreciate the opportunity. I will give a brief Director's Report. We have kept this library open while libraries across Massachusetts have closed their doors. That includes in neighboring towns with far larger budgets. We have people driving from an hour away on the South Shore just to come use our facility and access our materials. We've kept our services flowing to patrons of all ages, from infants to seniors. Despite several resignations, we have expanded our hours. I'm pleased to report that despite all of the obvious challenges, we are open. And last year, we delivered over a thousand programs to the community, including events on our lawn, author readings, child development classes for parents, English language learning, movie Mondays for seniors, and so much more. The vast majority of our programming for the benefit of Woburn residents comes from private individual donations, as well as the generous endowment of the library's trust funds, separate from taxpayer money. It's also important to note that we only receive $6,000 per year for programming from the mayor as part of the taxpayer-funded part of the operating budget. Our success in remaining open has come despite enormous pressures. The COVID-19 pandemic, social distancing, and moving programming online are the obvious ones. But it has also come despite issues with library booster groups, which have delayed issuing funding during the most challenging time for the city in 100 years, money that was raised in the name of the library. These successes have come despite our own library network improperly inserting itself in a labor dispute. In the mayor's own words, "The Minuteman Library Network does not, quote, 'have any right to dictate bargaining or budgetary priorities to the City of Woburn, and the harassment of our library director is intolerable and must stop immediately,' end quote." The mayor also pointed out in that letter to the Minuteman Network that, quote, "Seeking to intrude on the collective bargaining prerogatives of the City of Woburn and the work of my office, which manages those negotiations, is outrageous and unethical," end quote. These successes have come despite an ugly attempt by politicians to remove our trustees and then grant the mayor the power to handpick new trustees and a new library director. If that is allowed to happen, you will see this library turned into a political instrument. Politics have no place in a library. This isn't about personalities. This is about ensuring an independent structure that would stand its political whims today, tomorrow, and forever. Despite these challenges, we have been guided by the pillars of our 2017-2020 strategic plan, which included transitioning away from lifetime trustees. Now we look ahead to further updating this strategic plan. As we do that, I want to provide some context. To understand this, it is important that patrons and Woburnites understand that this is a battle for ideas that will define the role of this library, either positively or negatively, for decades to come. It's a vigorous discussion that I welcome. I have spent the last 15 years of my career broadening the services and materials that libraries provide. And I have said, since my very first interview for the job in Woburn, the library is far more than a storage facility for books. Any community who thinks otherwise won't have a library in the future. America's first library was created by Ben Franklin. He had books on the first floor and electricity experiments on the second. That's my kind of place. And that's why we have robots you can play with and 3D printers and telescopes you can sign out. Libraries were always meant to be places of knowledge, curiosity, pushing boundaries, and sometimes really crazy experiments. Libraries are meant to be laboratories for all kinds of curious minds. It's not just about knowledge made available by the library. It's about encouraging the creative application of knowledge among our constituents. Woburn has a modern library, a beautiful $31.5 million library, better than just about anything else in Massachusetts in a community of this size. But a modern look and feel does not guarantee a future. Only new and evolving ideas guarantee that future. Of course, we'll always keep traditional services available. Yes, of course, you can check out a physical book. Yes, we have storytime for children. Yes, we have free Wi-Fi. But here's what else the library of the future should have. One, libraries should encourage entrepreneurship. This is especially important considering the US government expects unemployment to remain high until 2024. This is also especially important considering that, for example, in 10 years, 800 million jobs on this planet, that's 1 in 10 jobs, could be made redundant because of automation, artificial intelligence, and the changing workforce. Two, our library must also serve marginalized residents, new Americans, people who don't speak English as their native language, children left behind because of the pandemic's educational challenges, the elderly who live alone, and others. Three, libraries should prepare patrons for a future, no matter how scary or foreign that it may be. Cryptocurrencies, artificial intelligence, climate change, et cetera. A library must help its users constantly see around the corner to what's coming to provide opportunities to surprise them, to prepare them. Four, libraries should create public-private partnerships that help us do things in new ways. This drives new ideas, new services, and new funding streams. Five, libraries should be a cultural beacon that respects and reflects the diversity of the world today. Woburn is changing. We want Woburnites to know, whether you've been here for five generations or five days, that we have something that will enrich your life. Six, libraries should communicate all of the above effectively. You can't be a company, a nonprofit, or a government without effective communications. Libraries across the country have realized that they need to think more about how they communicate to patrons, funding sources, electronically, new and old media, social platforms, and visually. My goal has been to make libraries accessible to everyone and to improve the library experience for all. It has to be of use for all ages, also socioeconomic backgrounds, and for a diverse group of constituents. And yet, in the dialogue surrounding how to make the Woburn Library meet the challenges, both of the pandemic and the world that is rapidly changing around us, admin staff have received threatening and harassing messages. I've had people share messages with me that are downright hateful. To be clear, I will discuss and debate the best ways to make our libraries accessible to anyone under one condition. I will not engage in discussions with people who place swastikas on my car or engage in other acts of intimidation threatening the admin team. It's shameful that those who committed these acts and an embarrassment to Woburn. This is how people are spending their time. In the middle of a pandemic, hundreds of thousands of people dead, a violent insurrection in our nation's capital, at a time when this country is incredibly divided, that division is being sowed here at home. A small group of vocal people driven and encouraged by actors and agendas outside of Woburn. I serve 40,000 people of Woburn. It's time for other voices to be heard. There's a saying, "A truly great library has something in it to offend everyone." Well, I'm all for free speech and the exchange of ideas, but not in an atmosphere of misinformation, lack of civility, and threats. Some people inside and outside of Woburn have made it clear they prefer attacking administrative staff personally rather than engaging in substantive debate. Some are unwilling or unable to have a conversation about the merits in a forum that excludes personal attacks and agendas. I won't engage with those people in such circumstances, and the citizens of Woburn shouldn't put up with it either. Rather, the citizens should be encouraging a discussion about solutions that position Woburn for the future. That's why I'm excited to launch our new strategic planning process soon. I welcome all ideas. My criteria for the people who serve on that committee will be that they have demonstrated, a demonstrated background in being a force for change and that they be compassionate, civil influences on their communities. This process will start in March and conclude in April. Finally, let me say that a library is not a static museum that never changes. It's all about adapting. That's why, many will recall, last year I raised the possibility of staff cuts. Why? This was three months into the pandemic. The library was closed. Thousands more were closed across the United States with hundreds enacting layoffs and furloughs. The economy was in a tailspin. Businesses were shut. There were no vaccines. Meanwhile, our staff was at home on full pay while they negotiated with the city from March until August. The future had never been more uncertain. I felt the need to speak the truth and to face the future with honesty. I raised the possibility of layoffs because I was aware of the mayor's fiscal conservancy. And like all Woburnites, I appreciate the careful use of resources. But I also want to make clear that neither the trustees nor library administration had a seat at that negotiation table. Union negotiations were held between the mayor's office and the union. Little did anyone know that three weeks later Governor Baker would lift restrictions. That changed everything, opened our doors, and brought people back to work. Today, we can't lose that momentum, which is why, incidentally, I wrote Governor Baker a letter last month imploring him not to close libraries again. It's also why, last month, I asked for the mayor to release funds from the existing operating budget for four new jobs, union jobs, which reflect the needs of a post-pandemic society in libraries. But I also have to be clear that the role of people who work in libraries is constantly changing, my own included. Traditional skills among library staff don't always translate to the rapidly changing world. No library should be dependent solely on the programming provided by library staff. The staff must support programming and services that meet the needs of a wide variety of patrons. This is an area that has been accelerated by the pandemic, making this more possible than ever before, thanks to technology. Since I arrived in Woburn, I've been talking to as many people as possible, including staff, about new and technological ways in which to prepare Woburnites and themselves for a very different future. A future, as I said before, in a decade, 800 million people could lose their jobs to technology. I'm not trying to tell you a meteorite might hit, it will hit. A library, this library must be a place where people gain the knowledge that propels them towards a better future. That, in a nutshell, is my job. That's what Woburnites should expect of their library. My philosophy is that if change isn't uncomfortable, then you aren't really changing. I love this library, I love this city, I love this job. I know there are things I can do better, and I'm committed to doing that. I've made a concerted effort to listen to community concerns over the past few months. And I want to continue that, starting with an inclusive strategic planning process. I hope people will listen to what I see as vital to the success of this library, and I'm committed to hearing their vision as well. I look forward to pulling together a team of bright and inspiring individuals to help the library in its new strategic planning process, including these concerned and motivated patrons. And I thank the trustees for the opportunity to share my vision of our upcoming strategic planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I will now entertain questions only about the strategic planning process. Would anyone like to ask a question? Bill?
Madam Chairman, I would just request, and if possible, that the directive, next month, provide an update on the selection and the, of the steering committee for the revised strategic plan. I know we talked about getting going on the revision, and we talked about bringing people in. I'm not asking for that tonight, but by next week, if she could give us an update on some people that she had invited to join her in this process.
Okay. All right, any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you very much. We are, I have to look at my agenda. We are going to move on to personnel. There are no, there are no reports of committees.
Carol?
Madam Chairman, please.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
A question for the Director. On selecting members who are going to participate in the strategic plan going forward, do you have a broad swath of who's going to be invited to attend the committee meetings?
I believe Mr. Callahan has asked me to present that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, there are no committee reports. We're going to move on to personnel. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Trustee Callahan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Personnel Committee met this morning. Carol and I, Trustee Kelly wasn't able to attend. By now, I think you've received an email from Trustee Sights requesting input relative to the evaluation. What I wanted to do was sort of set the table a little bit about the evaluation, how it came about, and what we hope will happen in the next week or so. According to the contract entered into between the Director and the city, the Board shall review and evaluate the library director. The library director and the Board shall define the goals and objectives which stay determined necessary for the proper operation of the library. That's referencing the contract agreement the city is in with the Director. Going to, we, now I'm going to quote from the June 4th, 2019 minutes of the Board of Trustees of the Woburn Public Library. All nine trustees were present. Director Ralston handed out her documents of strategic goals. At that point, and she went over them, that at that point, Trustee Callahan, moi, made a motion to approve the six steps in the strategic plan so that Director Ralston could start working toward those goals. This is quoted, by the way, right from the minutes. "Trustee Mahoney seconded that motion, and it was voted in favor, nine to nothing." Going forward, Director Ralston will prepare a Director's Report based on the strategic plan. And again, it's referencing June 4th, 2019. Now, what are the six goals that we're referring to? For the members of the Board of Trustees, Mrs. Chairman Saitz forwarded you what the six goals were. I'm just going to, for the the information of the other people, other people who are with us tonight, let me just identify those goals. The goal number one was to increase social media platform presence to more actively engage and target current and potential library users. Goal two was to increase library programming and physical world outreach across the day, the days and the city. Goal three was to redevelop library collections in spaces to provide a better user experience and encourage browsing and discovery within our facility. Number four, integrate physical and digital content to provide a richer user experience. Number five is to cultivate corporate sponsorships for Sunday hours throughout the year, centered around the showcasing generic robotic info tech, nanotechnology, and STEM programs. Number six was to increase professional development opportunities for library staff. So what you have there is the, how we got to the point of agreeing that the evaluation would be predicated upon the Director's performance during those, for those six goals. In your, in your email that you received from Trustee Sights today, it also requested, the motion was made at the Personnel Meeting, was to forward to all trustees at their City of Woburn email address, as well as their personal email address, these goals with requests for each member to submit a written evaluation as to the Director's progress towards meeting these goals. And I had to do both places because I'm, to make sure that we, we had them to you as soon as possible. We're asking for a submission to the Personnel Board by Monday of next week. However, realizing the schedule people have, if you need additional time, you may request it from either Mrs. Sights or myself. The Personnel Committee will then prepare a summary of those, the input that we get from the trustees, and will submit that summary for discussion with the true, full trustees in the very near future. I might add that in this email request that the trustees are encouraged, under separate cover, to offer suggestions for goals for the Director for 2021, 2022. So in a sense, that's where we are in the evaluation process. And hopefully, we can see some fruition by the middle of next week, and we can continue on to step two, three, and four of the process of conducting our obligatory obligation requirement, excuse me, our obligatory evaluation requirements. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I address Trustee Callahan?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so this came from the June meeting?
In June 2019? Yes, the 2000, give me a minute, 2019 meeting of the Thank you, of the Board of Trustees.
June 2019?
Yes.
Okay, so that would have been a year after the Director was hired?
I believe she was hired in April of 19.
Okay, so that year, okay. So the, what question I have is, is we're going to consider that we're going to start to do the evaluation correct now? And
Okay.
And this is two years later? But didn't her contract require us to evaluate her each year?
Correct. The contract says the Board shall review and evaluate the library director every year.
Okay, so now we're two years in. Do you recall in the September or October meeting I asked for us to begin an evaluation? And it was
I don't recall it, but I would accept it, that in fact, yes.
We did, we, I asked for it October, November. And here we are, six months later, addressing that. That's all.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a suggestion that we should stop the process because we're late?
No, I think that we missed the dates that we should have been doing this. That's what I mean.
Okay, but you're not disagreeing with the fact that we should move forward at this time?
Finally, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I wish it was six months ago.
But it's today.
Okay. All right, any other questions about the process of the evaluation? Okay, we're going to move on to the last item on the agenda, and that is I've got the wrong thing. The OML complaint, which was received from Jasmine Partha Sarathy. And there were concerns. Could someone remind me if I'm supposed to read this or not?
Well, Madam Chairman, if I may, maybe I could help out by reading what the complaint is all about.
Thank you.
Okay. The complaint was filed, as you said. And it began, and again, this is a complaint, there's public record that if anybody wants a copy, they could, they could have it. But I was, I'm trying to, I'm going to going through, given the time, I'm going to do much, pretty much verbatim. On January 11th, it begins, "Woburn Public Library Board of Trustees met to deliberate on open meeting law complaints. During the course of that meeting, President Jan Rabbit indicated that she has spoken with, quote, 'an attorney' in the following discussion insured. He said, she said, he said, she said, he said, she said." Totally irrelevant to an open meeting law complaint. It was just a repeat of the conversation that was had. And it's irrelevant because you can't really file a complaint against free speech. Adjust, the gist of the complaint, now I'll read, as submitted was, "As the above conversation demonstrates, a quorum of the Board of Trustees held a meeting and voted to retain the lawyer without the knowledge or participation of two of its members. By President Rabbit's own account, this was a decision made by the trustees in order to represent the corporation of the to represent the corporation of the library. The decision was not made by the corporation itself. In recent months, the trustees have claimed that decision made by the corporation was not subject to OML. Whether or not they are correct is not relevant in this case because President Rabid made clear in his comments that this lawyer was hired by the trustees themselves." That's a narrative that's a little bit confusing. Due to the nature of this offense, I cannot provide a specific date the meeting or meetings took place. I point out the action may well have required more than one illegal deliberation to first decide to hire any lawyer and later to decide which lawyer to hire. I assume this was recent decisions, given that this private attorney, Attorney Julia Sata Constantino, not McCollin, Fish, responded to my December 19 complaint that was discussed on January 19, but has not responded to any previous complaint. All members of the Board who participated in illegal deliberation underwent OML training at the end of October, beginning of November 2020. If any legal deliberation took place after that date, I see no way to argue that this was not intentional violation. So the complaint, in a nutshell, is that the decision to engage an attorney to represent the trustees was made surreptitiously by a group of trustees without the presence, outside the presence of at least two of the trustees, the two of the Board members. That's my read of the complaint.
Questions about that?
Yes, I have a question.
Please, no, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Should I question you or Mr. Callahan?
Mr. Callahan, he's the one that just read it.
Trustee Callahan. The meeting, the clandestine meeting where two trustees were not invited or had knowledge of it, how was the hiring or the retaining of the attorney achieved? Was there a contract? Was money allocated?
Is the question finished?
Was money allocated, and where did the money come from? That's the question.
Well, I'm going to answer the question simply, I'm going to refer you to the minutes of the September 15, 2020 trustee meeting, where all nine trustees were present. During the discussion from the legal subcommittee, trustee Callahan stated that he would like the Board to consider engaging legal counsel to serve the Board. Trustee Callahan made a motion to engage legal counsel and requested the President and the Legal Chair research and get back to the Board. Trustee Kelly seconded the motion. A roll call vote was taken, seven years to no, abstain, excuse me, seven years to abstaining. The two absences were trustee Mahoney and trustee McNamie. So the motion was made to engage legal counsel and request the President and the Legal Chair to do so and to get back to the trustees. I'll just quickly refer back to the next meeting, October 15, at which time we approved those minutes. Those minutes were read by all nine trustees, and it was confirmed by all trustees present voting to accept the minutes of the September meeting. So to answer the question, the motion was made, all nine trustees were present. Two trustees actually voted to abstain. They were there, the motion was made to engage an attorney. To my knowledge, the President at that time did in fact engage the services of an attorney. What she has not done is get back to us on that.
So, I agree.
Excuse me?
Madam Chairman, may I approach Mr. Callahan? Trustee Callahan, I recall that meeting, I recall those votes. What I don't recall is the decision made to retain an attorney with approximately $25,000. And I want to know where the money came from.
Okay, ready to answer? The item on the agenda, the issue that we're dealing with is the OML complaint. In our response to it, I am recommending that our response to the OML complaint be that, in effect, a vote was taken in full session of all trustees to engage the attorney. There was no clandestine meeting, no two attorneys, no two trustees were kept in the dock, that it was quite obvious that everybody had an opportunity to discuss this. That is the issue in front of us right now. It's not who paid what, where we pay it, who it's going to be, or anything else. I'll address that in a minute. So my point is that we're dealing with strictly an OML allegation, not any discussion about who, when, where, or how the attorney represents us or what.
Madam Chair?
Finished, Mr. Mahoney will let me finish. Any discussion, and again, I don't want it to get, I shouldn't even do it, that any discussion on how, when, where the attorney's belongs in a separate agenda item, and because it deals with legal implications, according to the open meeting law, should be dealt in executive session. And I think we could arrange that in the near future.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, my sense is that OML complaints are not necessary for executive session. OML complaints are open meeting law complaints. They are reviewed and considered by the Board in an open meeting, where we are now.
That's correct.
So the question is, I agree, we voted to entertain retaining an attorney. That was never carried to the next step where we retained the attorney.
We gave, that's a future agenda item, and if I remember correctly, we are addressing only the fact that this is an OML complaint, we are not addressing anything else. It was in, the OML complaint is asking if we met in full session. And Bill, could you please read, trustee Callahan, could you please read the part of the minutes again that verified that we actually agreed to hire an attorney?
Well, but still, as trustee Mahoney said, in open session, we are discussing an OML complaint. The only issue in the complaint is that the decision to engage an attorney was done outside the purview of two members. That's the complaint. We're dealing with only that complaint, we're not dealing with who, how much, or anything else. That, as I mentioned, is for another time. To our response to the complaint is simply that we have, we're referencing the minutes of the 15th, where motion was made to engage an attorney, and it was approved seven to two. All nine trustees were present at that meeting. That's the only issue in the open meeting law, the open meeting complaint. There's nothing in the complaint, and that says, you know, and you had no right to spend money, and you, blah, blah, blah. The bottom line is the complaint is simply that we did it outside of the open meeting law. The answer is no, we complied with the open meeting law when we voted to engage an attorney.
And I believe we have addressed the open meeting law complaint.
Madam Chairman?
I will not entertain further questions.
Oh, really?
I believe.
Really?
Excuse me?
In the?
Oh my God.
Madam Chairman, I would suggest that we allow Mr. Mahoney an opportunity to make a final statement.
All right, Mr. Mahoney? He's blocked, I know that, thank you. Could you please unmute Mr. Mahoney?
He has to click the button.
Click the button.
Richard has to unmute himself.
There he is. He did.
So, you referenced the October 15 meeting, at which place it was discussed to retain, maybe retain, investigate retaining an attorney? And there were two absences and seven in favor. That passed, we accepted that the next month. At a later meeting, the attorney was retained.
Okay.
Challenge.
I'm going to interrupt here, I believe that that has already been addressed. We are here to address the OML complaint, which deals with the fact that there were two trustees, the complaint was, it appeared the two trustees were not part of the decision, it's clear from the minutes they were. We are not here to address anything else other than that.
No. Madam Chairman? Madam Chairman?
Trustee Mahoney.
When the attorney was retained, there were two trustees that were not there.
That's right.
That's not what the OML complaint is about, okay?
Madam Chairman, I'd be glad to further this discussion in executive session because it deals with legal matters, and I think there's a lot to be said, maybe Mr. Mahoney's questions would be answered as to whether or not we authorized the President to engage legal counsel, and whether it was required that she come back to us, that's a whole different issue. And as I said, it has nothing to do with the open meeting law. I suspect that we should probably do this, not probably, should do this in executive session because of the legality that involves.
I also think it needs to be on an agenda item for a future meeting.
Madam Chairman, the agenda item was the open meeting law.
I have not recognized you, okay?
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Mahoney?
The agenda item is the open meeting law complaint.
Correct.
I have one final question. In this open meeting law complaint, what was the remedy the complainant was asking
Minutes of all illegal deliberations, there were no illegal deliberations.
Deliberation where two trustees were not invited?
No.
No, let me, Madam Chairman?
Trustee Callahan.
Let me just say, trustee Mahoney, was that question that you asked, what the complainant asked for as a remedy?
Correct.
Okay, is that, I want to make sure that. You realize that they could ask for anything, I mean, they could ask for all of us to be hung from the Woburn Common. As a direct result of these actions, Mayor Scott has removed President Rabid from the WPL Board of Trustees. These actions were not committed solely by President Rabid, the Board of Trustees. I request that all trustees resign effective immediately. So her request to us is that, she said Mayor Galvin has removed the President, so I guess that's not for us to do, if in fact he has done that. I guess she's requesting that we all resign. If I would, I guess I'll ask all the seven trustees tonight, are you willing to resign tonight?
No.
Do you want to take a roll call on that, Madam Chairman? A roll call vote, would you, are you willing to fulfill the complainant's request and all resign effective immediately? Do you want to take a vote on that?
No.
No, I think we need to move on, I think the OML complaint has progressed, and I think, do I hear a motion from someone that I respond to the OML complaint for the trustees? Do I hear a motion, does that affect?
I move, I still move.
Second?
Sal seconded.
Okay. Brenda, could you take a roll call, please? Where's Brenda? Oh, she's muted, Brenda's muted. Brenda?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, this is a motion to allow trustee Sights to respond to the OML complaint, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Trustee Mahoney? Trustee Sights?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Shuck?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee McNamie?
No.
And that's it? Okay, motion carries. Five to two?
Four to two.
Oh, four to two, sorry.
Okay, all right. I believe that is the last item on the agenda, is there any new business? There is not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I need someone to motion first.
I'll make a motion to it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Brenda?
Okay, to adjourn meeting, trustee Mahoney? Trustee Sights?
Yeah.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Shuck?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee McNamie?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you very much.